Order the. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Boulder Planning Board of November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two. And I see we are all here. We have a full attendance tonight. So. Let's see, Brenda, do you need to begin with the rules of engagement for this meeting?
Absolutely. I will start by sharing my screen. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Rittenhour. I'm with our communication and engagement team. Can you see my screen? Okay? Right thing. Okay, good. Always, always a good start. So just very quickly, I know that those who are joining us may have heard these rules many times. And appreciate your patience as we go through them quickly. Just as a reminder, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision. For a productive and meaningful and inclusive civic conversation. This vision is designed to support the physical and emotional safety. For community members, staff and board and commission members. And also supports democracy for people of all ages, all identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. For more information about the vision and the engagement process that that we conducted to reach this vision. You can go online to boulderColorado.gov. And in the search bar, put in productive atmospheres. That's how I find the best and easiest way to find that information. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder revised code and other guidelines that support this mission. And we will uphold these during this meeting tonight. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct this meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by. And must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. I am currently seeing whole names, so it looks like we're in good shape there. Currently only audio testimony is permitted online. So these are what we will follow this evening. Also, just a couple of tips for those who might be new to this space for us. If you would like to speak when we get to open comment and our public hearings tonight. You can use your raise hand button that you should find at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've joined us by phone, but I think everyone is on computer tonight. So you can press that raise hand button. You can also reach out to me in the Q and A if you have any technical questions, although I can't support any comments on the content of the meeting. Also, if you can't find that raise hand button, it might be in your reactions button. It might also be, you might also need to push Alt Y if you're on a PC or Option Y if you're on a Mac. All right. And I believe that is all we need for tonight. I will stop sharing and we can move forward.
Thank you. Okay. Our first item on the agenda is regarding the minutes of August sixth and October eighteenth. Would be interested if if everyone has seen those and if anyone is willing to move their approval. I think there was some correspondence that Laura made some changes. That have should have been sent to everybody and want to make sure you're aware of that. So do we have a a motion to approve them?
I will move to approve the two sets of minutes.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hands. All are in favor. So thank you. Thank you, Devon, for moving those ahead. All right. The next item on our agenda is public participation. And this is the time when members of the public can address planning board on any issue except. That which is being dealt with in a public hearing tonight. And that public hearing tonight is the site and use review application for. The redevelopment of the site. At forty seven fifty Independence Road. With the Holiday Inn Express Hotel. So if you have comments on that, please wait until the public appropriate time in the public hearing. But on any other issue, now's the time and we're eager to hear your thoughts. And Brenda, you can run the show here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not seeing any raised hands yet at this point, although I do know that sometimes. It takes a moment for folks to find that raised hand button. So we will pause just a moment and see if anyone would like to participate in open comment this evening. I am seeing one hand. So Devon, if you are ready with the timer, I will go ahead and unmute Lynn Segal. And then you will have three minutes. You should be able to unmute now.
Yay, three whole minutes. And it's really nice because last night at Parks and Rec. Turns out you have to sign up ahead of time and put the reason that you're speaking, et cetera, but. It's it's very difficult, Brenda, when this happens between different boards. For this board, you have to do this procedure and for that board, you have to do another, you know, and none of the boards that I follow of all eight. Require that, so I throw it to Sarah Huntley and the others. That, you know, you ought to get some consistent things going on within the city. Because it's a slap in the face for the public to. Experience one thing and then have it completely different for another. It's not very sophisticated and it's very simple, you know? Just do it the same for each board. Same procedure. Just do it. Now, as far as planning board issues. I just say things like Parks and Recreation, you know, people are complaining about tennis courts, you know? About not having enough money for anything. Well, you guys are ground zero. For having the money to do this stuff. And all you have to do is say no. And guess what? The developer is going to tighten their belt. Or they're going to leave. And if they leave, good. You know, we don't need. Too much in Boulder. We need what's just right in Boulder. And we haven't had what's just right for a long time. There've been subsidy after subsidy. Look at Fru House. It's outrageous. I just discovered this. If you're under thirty five feet, you don't have this constriction. With MU three, you. You don't have, you can, you can do. The inclusionary housing of. The regular percentage twenty five percent, but if you go to four stories. You have to have fifty percent of the twenty five percent onsite. If it's under, if it's three stories, you don't have to. So all the hours that I spent listening to planning board talking about details of Fru House. Was all for nothing because the developer could just turn around and sell it. And convert it to in lieu. What could you be thinking allowing something like that to be happening? Unbelievable. You know, I'm stunned. Anyway, think about those things. You know, let the developer pay. They can handle it, believe me.
Thank you, Lynn. I am not seeing any other hands up at this time. So I'll give a last call for open comment. Please use your raise hand button should you wish to participate at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, well. We have no dispositions or call ups to consider tonight, so we'll move right into our public hearing item. Which is a public hearing and planning board action on a request to extend the approval. Of site and use review application numbers L U R two zero one six dash zero 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 five one. And L U R two zero one six dash zero 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 five two. For redevelopment of the site located at forty seven fifty Independence Road. With a one hundred thirty eight room, three story, thirty five foot tall Holiday Inn Express Hotel. And we'll start out with a staff presentation. Take it away.
Great, thanks so much. Good evening, planning board members. I'm Charles Farrow. I'm the Senior Planning Manager and Planning and Development Services. And tonight I'll be presenting a request for an extension to development approval for a Holiday Inn Express, as John noted, at forty seven fifty Independence Road. The site and user review approvals were granted back in twenty eighteen. And Devon, I was hoping you might be able to pop the slide deck. There we go. If you could pop it into presentation view. Excellent, thanks so much. So this evening, the board's going to be asked to determine whether the proposal meets the specific criteria for an additional three year extension. For the approved site and user view applications. Next slide, please. So the site is located at the southeast corner of the diagonal highway in Independence and was formerly addressed as thirty three sixty five diagonal highway. When it was originally approved. It's located just to the south of the recently completed diagonal crossing mixed use development. Next slide, please. Thanks. So the approvals were granted in November twenty eighteen for a one hundred and thirty eight room Holiday Inn Express Hotel. It's a two point two seven acre site. Thirty five foot height maximum and two and three story building elements. There was a twenty percent parking reduction that was considered as part of the original approval, so one hundred and seventy five spaces were required. Where one hundred and forty would be provided in a combination of surface and subgrade parking. There is a landscape, park scape. Central courtyard entry feature detached sidewalks, landscaping and lighting upgrade site wide. The facility will also include a pool and a fitness center. Building finishes were considered high quality with composite wood limestone facade elements. I should also note that no other modifications to land use code were approved as part of the original site and user new approvals. Next slide, please. So the process to date on the site has been fairly extensive and includes a concept plan review in twenty sixteen that was not called up by city council. There was a site and user view approved by the planning department that was not subsequently called up by the planning board or council in November twenty eighteen. In addressing the conditions of approval that were part of the development agreement, the applicant has applied for and received approval. On the subject applications here on the screen, including final engineering, landscaping, final architecture. Subdivision as well as some easement and right of way vacations. Next slide, please. So under the three year rule in the land use code, a development approval is provided three years to begin and substantially complete a project. Next slide, please. So there's an extension criteria that's provided for in the code that allot's the applicant to staff level extensions, six months each. And then subsequently a planning board level of extension, which is what's brought us here this evening. So as noted in the packet, the applicant process, they're allotted administrative staff level extensions. And as before the board tonight, requesting an additional three year extension to get them through the building permitting and construction process. Next slide, please. Click one more time. Thank you. So there are three criteria to approve an extension, essentially that the applicant demonstrate reasonable diligence. That there's good cause for delays in construction and that there may be additional conditions imposed if there's been relevant amendments to title nine since the approval. So in this case, is outlined in the memo staff bond that the applicant exercised reasonable diligence and fulfilling a number of the conditions of approval. Including several technical document review applications. Along with the economic impacts from the pandemic on labor, materials. And pretty significant impacts on leisure and business travel industries. Indicating that criteria A and B then have been satisfied. And as I noted additionally, there haven't been any significant changes to title nine that would impact the existing approval. So staff isn't requesting or proposing any additional conditions this evening satisfying criterion C. Next slide, please. Thank you. So because the code is silent about the duration of the timeframe for extension, staffs interpreted the three year rule to apply to extensions. Although it really depends on the level of finalization necessary. In this particular case, an additional three years is pretty typical for what it is that we've seen in extensions from the planning board. And again, it's important to note that the applicant is required to abide by the additional conditions that have been set forth in the original disposition of approval. Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends a motion provided in your packet as shown for approval. Of the extension to site and user view cases L U R twenty sixteen oh oh five one and L U R twenty sixteen oh 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 five two. For a period not to exceed three years from the date of this decision incorporating the staff member memorandum of findings. Subject to the conditions of approval that were originally outlined back in twenty eighteen. So. We do have the applicant available this evening. They have a brief presentation. As always, I'm happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Okay, well, thank you. Will, I think what we'll do now is take questions for staff and then. Ask the applicant if he has a presentation or any remarks for us to consider. Sarah?
I just actually have one question, which is more general than this application, which has to do with the three year rule. And I'm wondering if it might be worth planning staff codifying that because. In fact, it's if a applicant gets two six month extensions and then three more years, it's really four years. And there may be some value to that, but I feel like it should get codified as to whether it's three years total or. Four years, including the staff extensions. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment.
I appreciate that and we will add that to our ongoing list of cleanup code changes. And I think it's a great suggestion.
Okay, ML.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Charles. I do have a question. And it would relate to the, I guess it would be under additional conditions of. Your chart, but. Are there any environmental factors that should be brought to bear, given that the city has declared a climate emergency in twenty nineteen? So this project was approved in twenty eighteen, but we have kind of a different climate in regards to. How the city is looking at development, well. How they should be looking at development, given that that there's that declaration of a climate. Emergency. So is there anything that would come to bear on this?
I don't know that there would, although I appreciate. The suggestion and the thought. I think from a regulatory perspective, the applicant is going to be bound by. The regulations that apply at the time of their building permits of middle, so. They'll be required to meet the energy code as it exists today. So I think from a regulatory perspective, I don't know that I would have anything to add as far as additional conditions of approval would go.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mark.
A couple of questions. Charles, thank you for sending the technical drawing package. I haven't spent a lot of time with them, but my first question is, does. This type of project. And I, I can probably, I probably could have answered this question if I really spent a lot of time with the with the use table and so forth. But anyway, I'll just ask you. Did this require at site review a TDM plan? That is separate from the technical drawings that you sent me today.
It did require a TDM as part of the consideration of site review. That was memorialized as part of the original site review approval. And back in twenty eighteen, it required eco passes for all the employees. Supplemental bike parking. Again, there was a parking reduction that went along with the approval. There was bike storage, I believe, that was proposed for employees. There is a bike share program that the operator is going to provide for patrons of the hotel. There's also four bus stops within a quarter mile radius and access to, you know, all modes and bicycle infrastructure. For patrons of the hotel to take advantage of. So I think those were the components of the TDM that were approved at the time.
Have there, have there been any, and this may be a question for the applicant, or maybe the applicant might address this in their presentation? Has there been? Any accommodation either in the present or pre-wiring for. Vehicle charging, bike charging, et cetera onsite.
I'll defer to the applicant on that as they're getting their building permits a little together as we speak, but I do believe that pre-wiring for EV charging is is a requirement of the energy code at this point. But we have Don Ash on the call and I'm sure he'll be happy to speak to that.
Okay. And then I'm looking at, you know, all the different layers of these technical drawings. And, you know, one of my concerns was the connect, that's a, that is a path and recreation rich connection. I can imagine a lot of people staying at this facility. For using, using the soccer fields or tournaments, et cetera. I can also see people who live just to the north, having relatives stay there, et cetera. So it's a, it's a, it's an area that that has the potential for really rich pedestrian and bike connections. And on the drawings, I see a kind of on the south. Facing southeast, you know, the whole, the whole thing is the whole southeast edge is a diagonal, as is called the diagonal highway. And you have the kind of textured line to me indicating a sidewalk or multi-use path. And then just adjacent to that, you have a wide path that it shows trees. Along that path and that and and that path is labeled as a bike path. So is there a separate? Bike facility from the sidewalk and is that? Separate and how is that separated vertically by visuals or how is that separated?
No, it's just a detached walk with a very significant tree lawn buffering it from the diagonal. In my studying of the original application, I don't think that the bike peg uses were bifurcated on that. Particular portion of multi-use path. So I think it functions very much like most of other multi-use paths in town.
Okay, so but then the differentiation in texture or like the the spotted path is what? As opposed to the. Area where the trees are. I don't know if you're understanding my question. I see this like long textured, what looks to be a sidewalk. And then what looks to be a bike path southeast of that. But adjacent to it with trees, is that all just one surface and that there's really no differentiation between the two surfaces?
Yes, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the civil drawings that I forwarded you today aren't the easiest to read. If you look at page thirty of the packet, though. There is a landscape plan, which I think lays it out. In a way that's a lot more legible. Yeah, as opposed to, you know, having all of the, you know, technical grading and, you know, utility line work all over it. I think this, the graphic that's on page thirty of the packet.
In the upper left hand corner, the. Yeah. So in that drawing, there's pink, kind of a salmony sort of pink color. The trees are purple. What is the surface of that salmony pink color?
That is. It's indicating a type of turf.
So, oh, so that is not paved, that is not concrete or pavement, that is grass or something.
I believe so, although. For some reason, the key in my packet.
As in mine?
Yeah. Is clunky. If you give me a minute mark during the applicant's presentation, if they don't know off the top of their head.
Well, so I, I, I think I'm reading this now as something that that the white is a concrete multi-use path. And that the pink salmon is some sort of natural surface with trees planted in it.
Yes.
Okay, that answers.
I will pull a. Not exactly sure what happened with the coding on that as the the PDF got uploaded, but. I can pull the original drawings here pretty quickly.
Okay, that, I, I think, I think we've, we've answered my questions. That's a.
Great.
That's it for me right now. Thank you.
Okay, I have a quick question that also relates to the TDM. And that is whether the bus service continues to be the same now as it was when it was originally approved. And and I bring that up, I think I'm the only member of planning board who was. Who was involved with that initial approval several years ago. And I remember there was some concern about it then too. But I know that in the meantime, bus routes have changed. And I wonder if that has resulted in any meaningful impact on the bus service to this area to and to this facility.
And so, John, I don't know off the top of my head. So I know that all of the four stops that are within the quarter mile. Radius of the site still exist. I don't know if there's diminished service based on COVID ridership. At this point, that's something that I could look up again during the applicant's presentation unless Don knows off the top of his head.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I think that would be useful information.
I'd be happy to.
Any, any further questions for staff? All right, then we'll invite the applicant to. To inform us about the latest in situation and what's going on there and how things have been happening. So please go ahead.
Great. My name is Don Ash with Site Works. We're a local engineering, planning and design firm in Boulder. Jeff Lamont's on the line. He's with the Ownership Group with Lamont Companies. And yeah, we're excited to bring this site review extension to you guys. Let me see if I can get this screen shared.
We'll need to give you permission, John. Give me just one moment.
No problem.
All right, you should be all set.
Okay, so, you know, as Charles mentioned, this is the Holiday Inn Express. Just for a little bit of concept here, this is a triangular parcel that's wedged between. Diagonal Highway, Forty Seventh Street, Iris and Foothills Parkway. It's just south of diagonal crossing, north is to the right of the screen here. Pleasant View Fields, Friends Schools directly to the west, Ucar is directly to the east. You know, currently the building plan is for eighty two thousand square feet. There's a hundred thirty eight rooms. As Charles mentioned, we have a hundred forty parking spaces with a twenty percent parking reduction. Our bicycle parking requirements are met. We have forty eight spaces provided. Twenty four of those are at the main entrance here. And then we have twenty four that are located just down the ramp, kind of in this. Um, and then we have twenty-four that are located just down the ramp, kind of in this um. Space on the south side of the building. Um, the building's primarily used for hotel. We on the first floor, we have hotel rooms. Uh, the purple areas are meeting rooms, lobbies, uh back of house spaces. Um, like I said, it is three stories, so the second and third stories are all um hotel rooms. Um, here are some building elevations. Um. And then getting back to the salmon hatch, I guess. Um. Right now, the plan is to extend the ten-foot multi-use path that comes down along the east side of uh diagonal crossing. Um, it would cross Independence Road. This would be a ten-foot multi-use path. Which would parallel the diagonal and connect down to the intersection of Forty-seventh and the diagonal. And then Forty-seventh Street goes north. There's a five-foot detached sidewalk along the east side of Forty-seventh Street. And then there's an eight-foot uh detached sidewalk on the south side of Independence. And then the gap here between the um, there's new curb and gutter that would be installed along the diagonal highway. Um, and the area in between the multi-use path and the curb and gutter would be filled in with soil. For the tree lawn and then right now, um, the um seed mix we plan to use is a short grass mix. Um, so it's pretty low maintenance um and should provide a nice buffer between the diagonal and the multi-use path. Um. So, you know, Charles kind of went through the timeline a little bit. Um, I just kind of want to reiterate some of the project schedule here. Um, we started our site review process back in two thousand seventeen. Um, at the end of two thousand eighteen, we had site review approval. That's when we went to planning board for the site review amendment. Uh, we continue to work on the project in earnest during two thousand nineteen. We submitted the final tech technical document review, the architectural plans and the landscape plans also get reviewed during the tech doc. Um, we had preliminary approval from staff at the end of two thousand nineteen. Uh, pending some final details with the subdivision agreement and the financial security. Um, and then, of course, the beginning of twenty twenty is when the pandemic hit. And um, we sort of put the project on a slow roll at that point. So um. This was interesting to kind of summarize for the last couple of years. Um, but you know, we were hit pretty hard with some travel restrictions in early twenty twenty. That put a big decline in leisure travel and business travel. Um, we also had some major concerns about construction, uh working on a major project like this uh with social distancing at the time. Um, and then we ran into some financial challenges with our financial partners, um, just trying to get funding for the project. Um, all of this really continued into twenty twenty-one. Uh, we've seen a big reduction in business travel. Um, we continue to have supply chain issues. Um, and then even towards the end of twenty twenty-one, um, Christmas time with Delta and Omicron, um, really still prevalent. Um, we had a big window here where we really felt like the project needed to be um sort of. Slowed down for the most part until we got to a better situation economically. So that's when we um submitted the first level staff review, which is twenty twenty-one. And then um, we kicked the project off again in earnest in twenty twenty-two. Um, we were working with our financial partners. We got the financial security approved for the public improvements. Um, we went ahead, resubmitted the tech docs, got the final tech doc approvals. For landscape, civil and uh architecture. Um, the final plat was approved in July of twenty twenty-two. Um, that went to planning board for a call-up. Uh, the plat was recorded as along with the development agreement. And then we worked in earnest in uh the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two. Um, pulling together our our building permits for architecture, for structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing. Um, we have engaged a a local permit specialist specialist, excuse me, um, to help us um navigate the city's review process. Um, so she's working on pulling the final permit submittals together. Um, and that brings us to the site review extension here at the end of uh twenty twenty-two. So um. You know, this is our future schedule for the next couple of years. Um, hopefully after we get the staff, excuse me, the site review approval. Um, tonight, we're gonna move right into building permits middle, um, first quarter twenty twenty-three. Hopefully start construction, spring, summer, twenty twenty-three. Um, and that construction period would extend into twenty twenty-four. And um, right now, we're proposing a tentative opening date at the end of twenty twenty-four. So that three-year um extension would fit. Nicely into our construction schedule. So um. With that, I don't think I have anything else to present. Um. If you want, I can talk about some of the questions you guys had as far as EV parking and the bus locations and stuff like that.
Well, I think uh if you can address those sufficiently, this is a good time to do that.
Okay, so um. Yeah, uh.
Hello?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get out of this screen.
Well.
Oh, here it is. Sorry, John. Um. So as Charles says, I mean, there are bus locations directly adjacent to us. The Bolt comes down from Longmont. There's um two stops on the diagonal. There's two stops on Iris. The bound is over on Thirtieth Street, which is pretty close. Um, I'm not familiar with the service um. Uh, reductions that RTD's been proposing for the last few years, but um, you know, those stops are still. Operating and local to our.
Yeah, Don, I'll interrupt you just really quickly. Um, so it looks like the Bolt um has a lot of availability. They're running buses between six AM and midnight routinely. Um, Monday through Friday. So if it did experience any interruptions, it looks like it's still high frequency. The Flex also serves the site, which is regional transit in northern Colorado in addition to the Bolt. So. It looks like all four bus stops that are within that um quarter mile um all have high frequency service at this point.
Thank you. Very interesting.
So and then, you know, as far as the EV charging goes, um, Charles is right. We have to meet all the energy code requirements. I don't have the specific number, um, but EV parking stations are required as part of the energy code. Um, checklist. Um, and I believe that's on the mandatory checklist. So I think that's it on my end. If you guys had any other questions, I'd be happy to. See if I can answer them as well.
Thank you. So we'll open it up to questions from the board, uh ML.
Thank you, John. Don, thank you for your presentation. Um, I have two questions. Uh, one, well, I'll ask the general one first. So, um. How does the parking reduction work for a hotel use? Do you anticipate that your guests will be coming in and alternative transportation or how? How? What's the, what's the thinking? On a parking reduction when the majority of the building is a, is I'm assuming out of town guests?
Yeah, it's it's a little bit of both. I mean, we have roughly a hundred and forty rooms, so um the parking code requires one space per room. And then uh the parking code also requires that we park one space per three hundred for the non-residential area. So for the lobbies, the meeting rooms. Um, other back of house spaces are all parked at one per three hundred to sort of accommodate for um. For the different employees and stuff. Um, you know, we do have, you know, local, regional uh bus locations that are pretty close by. So we think that. Um, a lot of employees and guests would utilize the the local bus networks. Um, you know, we would love to provide some sort of bike share or kind of uh. We are planning on providing some, you know, local bikes at the hotel for guests to use. Um, I think some users would, you know, use the shuttle. Um, so we're trying to promote some alternative modes of transportation, so nobody really has to drive a lot of cars into the hotel.
Hmm, and um. Is that a history in the hotel, in in your hotels, that people arrive to the hotel without a car?
It varies at different locations, obviously. Um, we were talking to Jeff earlier. He's got some other projects in Colorado and Montrose and Durango. Um, I'm sure the car utilization rates are higher in some of those other areas. Um, you know, I know, for instance, in Boulder that uh people are pretty um. Game to use alternative modes of transportation. So if we can provide a shuttle and get people in from an airport. Or um, you know, provide the shuttle back and forth to town, I I think that would help kind of reduce the trip traffic.
Yeah. That sounds, sounds like it could. Um, great, thank you for that. My second question is, so. Um, one of the um reasons? That the project was stalled was market conditions, labor shortage and material change disruption. Do you have things in place? Has the market changed enough? Um, and the labor shortage and material chain disruption changed enough to be able to secure the kind of timeline you're looking at?
We believe so. Um, you know, the business travel segment um surprisingly is still. Quite low. Um, they're projecting a fifty percent decrease in business travel in twenty twenty-one compared to twenty eighteen. Um, so the business travel segment's still, you know, quite low. Uh, we've seen a big in. Uh, uptick in uh the leisure travel segment. Um, which is where a lot of hotels are sort of catering to right now. So. Um, from a market standpoint, we feel like we're in a good position right now, travel-wise and pandemic-wise, that uh, you know, the business would be quite good. Um. Jeff um and I were talking earlier today. He's got some other um. Uh prefab structures that he's working on in Colorado, so we might be able to utilize. A prefabricated type construction method to do the hotel. Um, I wouldn't say that's set in stone right now, but um Jeff has um been working on plans along those lines. So that that's probably gonna help out too. Um, and it seems like the market's sort of stabilizing a little bit. Um. I know labor really is really tight and certain materials go up and down over the course of a few years. But um from a construction standpoint, um, I feel like things are not crazy and out of the ordinary right now. It just. Somewhat expensive, put it that way.
So if you were to go to? An off-site construction strategy like panels, um. Wouldn't that impact? The building permit? What you got identified on your building permit or? The building permit wouldn't? Need to show?
Yeah, the design would be the same. It would just be more of a modular construction.
Right. And that wouldn't impact the the building permit, um? The engi- the engineering, the structural engineering or any of those, because it sounds like I think you were going for the building permit like now, right?
Yeah.
So that doesn't impact, that doesn't change the building permit, um? What's approved?
No, so you know, we have the site review approval, which is the architectural plans that were in the package.
Right.
Uh, the staff packet or the planning board packet. Um, and then we have the technical document plans, which were approved earlier this year. So. At this point, we really don't want to change with the building. We don't want to change materials and substantially alter the structure. So we've been moving. You know, quite steadily on structural engineering, mechanical plumbing and electrical on the plans that we have in place. Um, and if we went with something prefabricated, it would just be uh. More of a. How can I put this uh? Not necessarily panels. Yeah, I mean, like, it wouldn't be a, we wouldn't change the materials to sit or anything like that. It would be more of just modular construction that we can.
Got, oh, okay.
The units into.
Built offsite. Okay, well, those are my questions relative to the um key issues that the staff identified, and I appreciate your answers, Don.
Great, thank you.
Mark?
Uh, thanks, uh, Don. I appreciate the answers you a- addressed for me earlier. Um, and I I uh appreciate the 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 quantity of uh bike spaces that it sounds like you're providing. Um, and your efforts to provide some sort of bike service as a as a product or amenity of the hotel. I I would simply say that um I would certainly. Try to take advantage of Boulder B Cycle or a contract with. One of the bike shops, et cetera, here in town, you know, Boulder is is a cycling community. We're very rich in that regard. And um, and my experience with hotel bikes uh all over the world is usually that they are in, you know, they they. The hotel was built or they went through a period of uh reconstruction or whatever. It's like, yeah, we're gonna buy some bikes and and then. Very quickly, they they fall into a state of disrepair and and you're you're really not able to to use them functionally. And it's kind of a. It's just kind of an embarrassing situation. And Boulder B Cycle has uh. I don't know if you know, has has recently totally revamped their fleet. They're all electric now. And uh, and the popularity and usage by uh a bowler B cycle has skyrocketed uh during. In the last year or two and um and they are just, uh, they've gone from being kind of marginal. And almost on the ropes to being wildly successful. So anyway, I I would encourage. Uh, a independent contractor from rather than trying to rely on hotel staff or hotel programming. To deal with your bike stuff. So that's my only comment there. Uh, and uh, final one would be. Um, you know, we are, we are coming into an age where people will be bringing uh electric bikes and if you. Don't want them in the rooms, um, which maybe maybe that there's no way to avoid that, given the cost of many people's electric bikes. Uh, you should have some elec- some facility for electrification uh and charging uh outside as well. So that's my input.
Mark, I'm a huge cyclist and I laugh because the bikes at the St. Julian have about fifteen years of dust on them. But nobody ever uses them. Um, and I think the big change, I think, in the last few years has been with the e-bikes, and I think it's pretty easy to put. Some charging outlets in our long-term storage area, and we can bring the bikes in the garage and provide a little power. For people to charge their bikes. I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah. And Boulder B Cycle as a, you know, it's like they arrive, they're there, they pick them up, they charge them, they maintain them. And it's an amenity that really is of of no cost other than a a space, uh, you know, outside facility space to the to the hotel.
Those e-bikes with B Cycle, I think, have been a game changer this year too. So um, we we entertained B Cycle a few years ago, and at the time. They weren't into a big expansion area. Um, you know, when they had the old red bikes. Right. But now with diagonal crossing, I I think that might be something we can look into as well.
I think there are Boulder B Cycle bikes at diagonal crossing currently. So anyway, some is worth checking out.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Ash.
Um, thank you.
So I think we'll uh, we'll begin our public hearing now. So this is the time when if any members of the public. Have comments or thoughts that they wish to share with the planning board on this matter. Now's the time. And Brenda, if you uh take charge of that again, that would be great.
Thank you. I do see one hand up, so um we will go ahead and start with Lynn Segal. Uh, Lynn, I will enable your microphone.
Interesting when reflecting on um Papilio and how they wanted, um, you know, a hundred and sixty spaces and they wanted them so that. The penthouses can have two parking spaces in the middle of the B V R C. And here, Don has this place out on the diagonal. And he's getting a parking reduction of twenty-five percent. Um, like. Wh- wh- what sense do you make out of that, you know, um? It, eh, you know, and and even though this is a hotel and they're doing twenty-five percent less, very good. And they're doing all these bike things and stuff. First of all, I don't know that people that are coming. To that hotel are gonna be. Uh, I would think they'd be driving their cars more because it's kind of out, it's not in central Boulder. Uh, I would think they'd be driving their cars more because it's kind of out, it's not in Central Boulder. Um. But uh, who knows? Um. Stranger things have happened. The Hill Hotel, you know, other, other hotels that are coming into town, the millenniums that being taken over. By the CU students. So the the use of different spaces for hotels. Is getting basically extracted out the diagonal, right? Because it's all CU owns Twenty Eighth Street now. You know, it's all student housing. Steve Wallace refurbished that place, Best Western, all kinds of money thrown in there. And then CU take and just scrape it or whatever they're doing, completely redoing his redo from like a couple of years ago. It's just, you know, these things need to go through environmental review. They need to go through the environmental board or something because, you know, you can't do it with someone, a personal house. When someone's got their granite countertops and they're the wrong color for the next person, you know? But you can do it for these larger projects. And you know, in Cuba, they don't have hotels. They don't do that, you know? I mean, maybe in Havana, if you're for the business traveler or uh, but not nearly as much. The United States should take the model of live-ins. When people come and visit, they come and stay in homes locally. And they really experience the area in a, in a much more profound way than a hotel. Um, you know, so I'm kind of, you know. I can understand Dawn's project, you know, because there's no hotels in Boulder anymore because CU owns Boulder. And now they really own Boulder after, you know, CU South passed. So we're in a pickle here, you know? But uh. I suppose what can you do? You know, he's gonna have his another hotel and. Uh, and I'm glad that actually COVID slowed things down. I think that the leisure industry is taking over the business industry, which is an interesting concept, isn't it? Because the business people aren't getting out when they're doing Zoom, so then they wanna do more leisure when they're off. So in that sense, it's good. But I'm trying to see the bright side here, you know? Thanks.
And I don't see any other hands, just taking a pause for a last call. I think our other callers on the phone, you would press the star nine to raise your hand on the phone. All right, I think we can safely move forward.
Okay, thanks very much, Brenda. Um, okay, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion now. I think you've uh, you've all seen the the matrix that Charles has prepared to. To help us uh go through, get through the issues we need to think about. And uh, I open it now for discussion. Wow, rare that it's so quiet. Okay.
I'm looking for my hand. Um, I will, I will use uh the matrix and just go through the three um. The three issues that are identified there. So the criteria for demonstrating reasonable um. Uh, due diligence, I do believe that the applicant has met that. Um, starting in twenty nineteen with the tech docs and the final platform view. And the recent middle in twenty one and going through building permit uh planning. Um, in this, in this year. So I do believe that that has been um, has been met. Uh, the second issue, the criteria for demonstrating good cause, um, you know, I guess. I'm not. I think it's still a difficult market. And I think to be able to accommodate the schedule as proposed. Um. I like the idea that the applicant is looking at some off-site construction, some modular construction. Which of course uses an entirely different labor pool, which is a little bit more stable. Um, but I. I'm not totally convinced that um the timeline can be met within the next three years. But I don't have any hard fact knowledge saying otherwise. I, yeah, so tha- that's that one. And. I think it would be, I appreciate um the applicant's thoughts about. I'm looking under additional conditions and my concern with um what has been brought to the table, given the environmental. Um. The uptick in our environmental thinking and concerns and considerations. I think that the idea of the bikes and the alternative modes of transportation to the hotel, I'm not sure. Um, I think I'm in agreement with, I think Lynn Lynn said that. That people are gonna be coming to that particular hotel on the outskirts of Boulder. By anything other than car, but I like the idea that you're suggesting that you have a hotel, an airport shuttle. I don't know of any hotels in Boulder that have an airport shuttle. Um, you know, I know we have, we have the um different shuttle options to take as individuals. But I think that could be a big uh, a big um. Means for people to not bring a car into town. So I like that kind of thinking and I, and I think you've got the kind of thinking again with that and with. The um constructibility and and where we're at with all that. Uh, so I um, tho- those are my thoughts and my concerns. There isn't anything, any concern that I have that would um. Recruit me from approving this extension. Just concerns to be thought about. Thank you.
All right, Laura.
I'll try to keep it short and sweet and focused on the question of granting this extension or not. Um, I do believe that the applicant has demonstrated reasonable diligence in the steps that they've taken towards completion. I do believe that they have demonstrated good cause for the delay, obviously with COVID and the labor shortages and supply shortages. Uh, it would be hard to argue against that. So yes, on good cause. And uh, I am persuaded by staff's arguments that um there should be no additional conditions placed by this board. Given that uh there have been no updates to Title Nine that would affect this application. So for me, um, I I am certainly uh eager to hear what the rest of the board has to say. But I do not personally see any reason why we would not grant an extension.
Okay, Lisa.
I'm very much the same, so I won't um quote the language again since you just did it beautifully. Thank you, Laura. Um, but yeah, I I think they've met the necessary criteria. I don't see any profound or compelling reasons. Con uh that would go against what staff found in terms of it making sense to. Put an extension in. Um, perhaps someone else on planning board will convince me otherwise, but um as of right now, I I agree with staff's findings and. I think it makes sense to proceed.
Okay. Other thoughts? Mark.
Well, if if we're ready, I'm, I'm ready to make the motion, but I don't mind. I didn't mean to cut anyone off that had any additional comments. George's thumbs up on making the motion, so.
Wow, this may be the fastest uh public hearing in history for us, but uh.
Okay, all right. I move to approve an extension to site and use review. Case number, case numbers, L U R twenty sixteen dash zero 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 five one. And L U R twenty sixteen dash zero 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 five two. For a period not to exceed three years from the date of the decision. On the request incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact. And subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's move to a vote. And I think uh, do we need to do a roll call vote on this? Sarah.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
M L.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And I vote aye. So unanimous approval. So congratulations to the applicant.
Great, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you. Make it beautiful.
Thank you.
All right. This is uh moving along pretty quickly. Now we move into matters uh from planning board. And uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to make sure that we all have met Devon either in person or virtually, who. Is working with planning board now, having replaced Cindy. Uh, I think most of you have have met Devon, but I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware of that. So.
Appreciate that, John. Thank you. And uh, as always, I'm really excited to work with you all and uh, um, yeah, always here for you guys.
Okay, it'll be fun.
Welcome to our team, Devon.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great to have you on board.
Okay, and uh Brad, uh are there any matters from staff that uh we should think about tonight?
Well, uh, last time we talked, I mentioned we were really in the home stretch for all practical purposes. Uh, to the end of the year and now we're really in the home stretch. So, you know, as far as our world exists. We're well into the new year already with planning and projects and deadlines on memos and things like that. I did mention um, kind of leading up to it in in different contexts, the study section. We had with uh council on November tenth. That was um. An overview of Boulder Junction two as well as um. An update of ADUs, but really it was a broader conversation about. How to manage all the different priority uh projects the council has and work program items. Um, we came out of that with a very good um but aggressive schedule. And I encourage you to uh maybe look at that and know that that has implications for the planning board. Uh, because any work sessions that we um schedule with the council and certainly any ordinance, any ordinances. Uh, include a a lead up to planning board. Uh, these topics specifically, in addition to the two that I mentioned. Um, Boulder Junction two and and ADU regulations also include occupancy regulations. And zoning for uh housing affordability. Um, in that discussion, council was very clear that they want to move um very decisively and um quickly. To the degree that that's possible on ADUs and occupancy in particular. Um, they recognize that there has been uh significant input uh both formally through city processes. Um, but also um de facto through, in the case of occupancy, for example, the. Uh, bedrooms are for people initiative from a year plus ago. Um, in the case of ADUs, a lot of public commentary and analysis over the years. Um, so they really um. Made it clear that they didn't feel it was necessary to initiate. Uh, new outreach uh in that uh in kind of the traditional sense of starting a project. But that that really was uh very ripe and mature. And so we are working towards um. Direction from them to bring forward, you know, fairly specific ADU. Uh, language that would eliminate the um saturation requirement. And fairly specific uh analysis around occupancy that probably centers on. A specific number of unrelated that differs from uh the current standard and and really move those through. So um, again, recognizing planning board's engagement on that, uh certainly encourage you to kind of track that as it, as it moves forward. Those and the other council priorities are prominently uh situated on the city's website. And has a real-time kind of uh ramp up to that, so you can check that at any time. Uh, Planning and Development Services has five, five of councils uh ten priorities, so uh. Uh, I guess we we drew the short stick or the winning draw. I don't, I don't know what that would be, but. At any rate, we're, we're happy to to be working towards councils. Uh, desires in that regard and they, they did acknowledge that that's a lot for the department, especially given that. Uh, we have had to shift some of our resources to development review. Uh, development is, continues to come in at very high pace. And so that coupled with. Uh, few months of having lost staff. Um, and then recovered it. And if Charles were here, I would, I'd be complimenting him for bringing back. Uh, essentially three senior planners uh for the department who had left at one point and. And were wooed back. So we have people coming back that are able to hit the ground running, but we did lose a few months there and. Carl Geiler in particular um was moved over for a couple of months here to develop the review, just so we weren't. Uh, you know, dramatically late in processing the types of applications like the one that you saw tonight. Um, so just a picture uh that I wanted to paint for you of of a little bit of the department's workload. Um, and also councils' expectations of us as we go into the new year. Um, beyond that, uh, we continue to work on operational excellence efforts. Uh, including our electronic submittals. Uh, we are not a hundred percent there yet, but uh we're making steady progress and. Again, not something that is real forward-facing for planning board. Uh, but really sits in the background and is a big part of our operations and how we do what we do and and how we work to be better for the. The public that we serve um through these processes. So I think with that, I'm, I'm. Happy to answer any questions the board members might have.
Well, thank you. Uh, oh, well, I see the hands have popped up right away.
Up and up.
Sarah, go ahead and we'll get to everybody, I guess.
All right, I just wanna make a few comments to you, Brad. Um, and. I can catch them as questions, but they will be semi-rhetorical.
Okay.
The first, the first comment is uh, the idea that there's been adequate public input on A, on ADU revisions is actually laughable. Since the only conversation that has happened was at half. Secondly, uh, the public has spoken about occupancy limits. Uh, however, the occupancy limits vote does not match what the current city council majority wishes. So I would suggest that um that there has not actually been, there has been adequate public input, but. I think this council would like to ignore that. Um, and so I will, whenever I have the opportunity on planning board. Bring up the need for more public input. Thirdly, we actually have a public participa- participation. Participation process. And for city council to just push that away because they think we have adequate input. Seems to me. Um, really unfortunate and throwing process out the window. Um, there was a fourth thing I wanted to add, which I can't remember, so I will leave it at that.
I understand the rhetorical nature of your comments or or questions. I I appreciate uh what you're saying. I'm. Um. You know, it as, as staff, I I try not to fall into this. Uh, response very often because it's a little bit of a cop-out, I will admit, but um. To some degree, I I know you appreciate that um I'm the messenger of these things and and not the policy setter, but. Understand and appreciate there are multiple views about uh the process to date and and uh. And the direction of of where that policy might go. Hope you're still muted, Sarah.
Yeah, let me just follow up with that. In twenty eighteen, city council embraced the public participa- participation. Proposals that were the result of a one or two-year process. So for council to just throw that out the window because they want to move forward quickly on certain agenda items. Is i- if you wanna understand why the city council has, why the city has such low trust in the community, it's because of crap like this. And I know that you're just the messenger, but people expect to have a voice here. And for this city council to just silence people because they wanna move forward on a particular set of agenda items. Is just gonna create more uh um frustration. And I think it's a, I just think it's a terrible mistake. And you are, you guys as staff are the ones who have to deal with. Frustrated, angry, annoyed residents of Boulder. And I'm just telling you, this is not. The best way to move forward on some of these issues. And I will leave it at that. I heard what you said.
Mark. Mark.
Uh Brad, I watched a portion of that council meeting and then uh didn't. And um one of the things regarding ADUs was, I believe that HAB and uh community groups had five uh ADU items and my and that's your position or staff's position was that they could, depending upon this matrix of of available time and decision making, et cetera. Um my question is, uh did you settle on addressing three of those or are you addressing all five of the proposed changes? Is this bringing a bell or am I just way off base?
You're talking about changes specific to eighty years?
Yes, I I thought there was, that the proposal was to address that they had HAB had come with a list of five ADU items and depending upon where you landed and the other tasks uh that there were, you were proposing to address three of those ADU items. And again, I I may have gotten that wrong. It was a it was a complex uh evening of uh.
It it was. I think um Mark, you're alluding to the fact that um count, staff had gone to council with a recommendation of a calendaring schedule, which which by implication included scope for the six different work program items that we presented. Uh seven, if you include, I'm sorry, no, it was seven, eight, if you include uh a general acknowledgement of number of downtown related uh planning processes that are kind of bubbling. And in bringing forward that recommended uh order and scope, we offered a couple of options, and one of the options was specifically an expanded ADU option, which obviously would then expand the the time by which it was completed. Um trying to remember whether that uh let me take a quick look at the edit right here in front of me, if that spoke to some of those additional points. I I think what you're remembering, uh if if I was to try to recreate that was that um there were other items that would expand the the discussion and ultimate decision on ADUs related to things like parking and such. And the decision was to keep the scope narrower as as identified.
Okay.
Yeah. Did I answer your question? I wasn't.
Yeah, sure. I think that's, I think that's fine. Um and I I just, I will uh offer a slightly different perspective, and maybe it's uh disheartening to have two different perspectives on on uh on ADUs and occupancy, but I'll I'll offer, I'll offer mine, and that is that um that it is it would be unwise to disregard a very recent uh ADU process and a great amount of public input that happened. And John, you you participated, I believe, on planning board in this whole ADU thing, so I don't know, was it twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen? Et cetera. So there is, there is a lot of public input that I believe that is still valid that can still be taken into account and doesn't mean that we need to restart every every aspect of public input um uh in regard to ADUs. I do respect Sarah's comments about respecting what what council has adopted in terms of public process. We have a public process model. And I think that public process model was employed on prior ADU uh subjects, and and I and I think it would be um al- also dangerous to disregard that that prior input and the results of what our prior ADU effort uh yielded, which is not very many new ADUs. And I so I think that a realization that a course correction in our ADU's po- ADU policies uh does not necessarily warrant a revisit of all things ADUs and all things public process. So anyway, I think there is a valuable information and public input to be had going forward, and there is valuable information and public input that is a part of the record uh in the past. And in regard to occupancy, yes, we as a city voted down uh the bedrooms are for people proposal. And uh and you, sure, we need to respect the will of the voters. One of the things that I heard repeatedly during uh during my involvement in that election was that we want fairer, better occupancy uh regulations. The bedrooms are for people proposal was not uh was not what they were looking for, but that did not mean uh that that the community would not support uh an expansion of occupancy limits that was fair and more thoughtful that the community in some regards thought the bedrooms are for people proposal wasn't refined enough. So that's my, that's my comment on that. Thanks.
Lisa.
Yeah, um well, first I'll say congratulations on successfully luring back three planners. That is no small thing. I think one of them is Darren Wagner, and you be good to her and you hold on to her. Um and everyone else. Um and then, uh you know, onto this topic, I I think it's a fascinating one. Um I have multiple ta- thoughts on it. I'll start kind of at a relatively high level. And that is that I feel like, cause I think we have a great deal of agreement in my opinion, around missing middle housing, you know, on this board and and um and sometimes I think we get pulled into conversations and and kind of turmoil around things that maybe don't actually address our housing issues. Um, you know, I I am not uh I I'm kind of okay with ADUs. I think Denver's ADU um situation is very interesting because I need to look back, but I think they like allowed it as used by right in a whole bunch of zones and areas, and then nobody built any or like a handful got built because it's incredibly expensive to build them. So like, even if you're like, yeah, sure, go for it. Um you know, you still have to pull the, I mean, a lot of the costs that are involved in building a structure of that size are equivalent to what it might be to build a larger structure or just equivalent to what it would be to just go buy an apartment or something. Um and so I, you know, I don't know. So I I I I think it's really important that the process be done well. I did not listen to or attend that meeting, so I'm honestly not up to speed in the way others are. Um it sounded like perhaps again, I'm I'm not like overly opposed to ADUs. I also don't think we're gonna get yet like an alien, even if you make them legal, but I do think we need to be thoughtful about um what if we're permitting them, I would personally be fine with more permissive permitting. Um how are we taking into account, you know, how they're done, making sure that whatever does get built? Who knows how much or how little that is, is done in a smart way, you know? It sounded like maybe some stuff moved pretty fast um and 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 some stuff, and and so I I have some concerns around that, and I I don't know if the planning board has a place, but I'd be very curious to get perhaps a readout of what exactly is going on or what decisions are being made um in a way that was more digestible than that meeting was. Um and then um occupancy, I think, is a fascinating one too, because I'm not gonna say, I mean, I I I've been over occupancy. I am currently under occupied, right? I mean, I I do not have a person for bedroom right now. Um and and at the same time, when I see things like that we're gonna be closing elementary schools, I suspect that what's going on, and and I don't blame people for this, is that we have a lot of older adults, either couples or singles living in large single family homes who don't have an attractive other option to move into and aren't gonna move in a ton of roommates. Um anyway, so so I just want to say that that I think these are all things worth talking about, and I and and I think respecting, you know, what voters have done while also saying, okay, but we somehow want to address this is important, and I also hope that we can continue to keep in mind that in some ways this is nibbling around the edges. Um and 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 we can get very focused on these specific use cases and conflicts that I'm not saying they don't matter. I'm not saying this isn't worth worthy of attention and time um from us and from others and from voters, but it doesn't actually address the broad things that are happening demographically and broad things that are happening with how people are using our housing stock um and what's getting built and not built, and you know, so anyway, that's, I'll just put that in there, and then and then I'll say broadly, perhaps, you know, we don't get super in depth on it tonight. But if there's time in a future meeting, I I would love to educate myself independently more on this, and I I think I would also benefit from hearing from staff or hearing from someone from HAB or something to just understand better, like what exactly are you doing? And like, what did you take into consideration? And like, where are we at? Um because I don't feel one hundred percent up to speed on it.
George. You're muted, George.
Sorry. Um I'm a little, I'm a little speechless because I think what Lisa said just now resonated entirely with me. And and I appreciate her thoughtfulness and and putting that out there. I too am not necessarily opposed to ADUs one way or direction. I don't think they're gonna solve much um to to what I've seen and understood in the country, but I I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm not sure that there's been enough public process in that. It more so as it relates to occupancy, again, I think there are varying opinions of how it would actually it could actually be detrimental to affordability um in our town, and that's one of the reasons why the voters spoke the way they did. Um and to suggest that enough public process has been done there um to go contrary to that vote or even near contrary to that vote, I think is a very dangerous thing for city staff to be directed to do because you guys are ultimately gonna bear the brunt of that. And that was a very contentious process. Um and I I think it really needs to be thought through, and I think the public needs to be brought into that process. Regardless of what the outcome is, um to make sure you guys develop trust with the community. I I I think that's real because a lot of people, you know, are are concerned about the democratic process in Boulder. You know, the votes, whether you like them or not, whether it was this election or the prior elections, the votes are the votes. And when when the city starts to go against the democratic process in the city, um the community is gonna get fired up. Um so I I would, I would urge abundant caution on that process, and I would not make statements like enough public outreach has been made on these issues because um the outreach was made and the vote was pretty decisive on what that outreach um, you know, the ultimate outreach is a vote. Um so I I again, I I wouldn't want to be in your shoes being directed to do that. Um but I wanted to bring it up again because Brad, since you haven't had the benefit of being in Boulder when that process happened, um it's worthwhile to study it and really understand where the where the community is at on it. Thanks.
Laura.
So I I don't think tonight is necessarily the time or the place for us to try to, you know, litigate what happened with occupancy limits and ADUs, but I do appreciate what my fellow board members are saying is that that was a a very contentious process, especially on occupancy limits. As I recall, it was a pretty close vote. And as I recall, quite a lot was written about it and said about it in public, uh in newspaper editorials um at city council meetings. So I think that there is a lot of previous sentiment to draw upon. I suspect that most of the major arguments that we're going to hear about it in the future, we've also heard about in the past. So I think it would be a very useful effort for um city staff to try to summarize what kind of input do we think we have received on ADUs and occupancy limits? And what are the arguments? What are people concerned about and why? Um and why do people want these things? Um you know, what are the reasons in favor and the reasons against? And really um try to detail that rationale, because I suspect that we pretty much understand the playing field. And I think um, you know, I did not watch that city council meeting. I would be surprised if they said we're not gonna take any more public input, we're just gonna craft something and vote on it. I think my understanding is what they said is they did not want to restart from ground zero, from scratch with a, you know, two or three or five year public process prior to considering a new ordinance or some kind of new direction. But I'm um fairly certain that they would expect that there will be public outreach components, just maybe not as extensive as something like the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan that started from zero and took three years and was extremely extensive in terms of public outreach. So I think it would be worthwhile to try to map what we think we have heard so far and where there are gaps and continue to have public input and public outreach as we go along, even if it's not quite as extensive as some of the other processes where we don't have this large history. I know for myself, um for the next time we talk about this, I'm gonna make sure that I read that document that HAB put together, uh that I think was forwarded to us as a board, and I haven't read it yet with their recommendations on ADUs, which I think is what city council was acting upon. So I wanna uh understand what that process was and what their recommendations were. I'm gonna go back and read uh and watch that meeting, that video of the discussion that city council had about this, so I can understand what exactly they were saying about um the extensiveness of public input and what their expectations are and their direction to staff. And I would encourage my fellow board members, um if you have not done those two things, I hope we would all do them together so that we can uh approach it from the same uh basis of information. And if folks have other things that they think we should all be reading or watching or educating ourselves about um in addition to what staff will will bring forward to educate us with, I am completely open to to learning about all of these things and the different perspectives and concerns that have been expressed. So um Brad, I'm I'm super excited uh to hear about the priorities for the next year. I wish you good luck in your tasks and also big congratulations on your your three uh uh rehires. Um are you at full staffing at this point, or do you still have positions open?
Um we still have positions open within the two planning divisions. Conference of planning and and development review planning, uh we have some vacancies, but they're due to new budgeted positions, so it's for all the right reasons, and we actually jumped on the advertising for those before the budget was approved. You know, got an early start. And I think KJ is actually just this week making an offer, and then Charles will have a couple few yet yet uh coming, but in department wide is another issue too. It's it's just a tough labor market right now.
Yeah, well, good luck filling all those positions with excellent people. They've they've got a great team to join, so um and that's very attractive. So hopefully it won't be too long till you're fully staffed.
We're working, we're working hard on that. Well, I appreciate all the comments from everybody.
Well, I uh I I can't resist chiming in a little bit also on this. Uh I you know, I I have to say that I agree with all of my colleagues' comments here, but there are two uh two elements that I I would like to stress. One is that I I can I I think we need to be clear about what city council is really suggesting with respect to the public process on such a an issue that is so fundamental in Boulder. And uh so I, without wanting to put words in their mouth or or your mouth for that matter, I I think uh as some of my colleagues have mentioned, we have gone through a a major effort to improve our public process in the city, and I think on on an issue, and that was recent, and on an issue of such widespread interest on on all sides, I think it would be a a mistake for us not to follow that process that that the city has adopted. And I'm I'm not sure that council really indicated that we shouldn't follow that process, but as Mark said, there are things that have happened in the last few years that needn't be repeated, but nevertheless we we do have a process that I think the city has accepted and agreed upon, so I I would just uh stress that. Beyond that, um I I'm the uh, Mark and I are both uh working as liaison to HAB. And I I have to say, I was present at the meeting where the, at the meetings, I should say, where the letter was developed and written. And I think with all due respect to HAB uh and uh my my urging them to consider explicitly some conditions which they might not have fully considered. I I personally am think that their letter needs to be taken with a grain of salt. They uh are pushing hard, they have good objectives, but but their full consideration of many of the issues of concern, I think, was uh was lacking. And so I I would just uh mention that.
Thank you, Josh. And again, thank you. And again, thank you everyone for the comments. It um. It it's it's a balancing act, every aspect of land use is, every uh, communication and. Yes, there were certainly nuance in uh, council's comments about. How how we would and it should be engaging on all of these various work program items, so. Thank you all for the input. That's very helpful.
Well, you're on the hot spot, so it'll be interesting.
Yeah, my my seat's getting hotter all the, all the time here.
Laura, I see your hands up.
Yeah, um, I saw on the calendar that for December, there, December twentieth, there is a matters informational item. Staff debrief to planning board on council's twenty twenty-three priorities and affordable housing plans. Is that in addition to what you told us tonight? Is that a further refinement of what you told us tonight? That's on our calendar for December twentieth?
Um, I I think it probably is a refinement of this. What was the title again? I don't have that.
It says um, matters, information item, staff debrief to planning board. On city council twenty twenty-three priorities and affordable housing plans. Your name's on that, Brad, as well as Christopher and Charles.
Yeah, it it would be more of of what we just discussed, and we'll have this summary memo uh, to council. Completed by that and and would be getting that to you in advance of that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, were there any other matters from staff?
None at this time.
Okay, how about city attorney? Elliot?
None, none from the city attorney's office as well. Good seeing everyone tonight.
Okay. Well, I think uh, there might be several uh, issues from uh, from the board to talk about. Mark uh, sent a an email a couple days ago that I think now's the time to to. Let Mark talk a little bit about that and see how we respond and think about it.
Okay, John, thank you. Um, I'll try not to uh, hold the floor. I I I purposely sent. An email to try to make uh. Let us have a starting point for our discussion that um. That we, where we could start, and and if 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 board members have uh. Issues or think that what I've outlined in my email is incorrect or. Uh, doesn't reflect our our operating procedures. I I would love to hear those thoughts, but my, the the real purpose in this is. Isn't any um, organization, you know, uh, rules and procedures are. I find I'm I'm a structured person, as my children will, you know, uh, tell you. With with some chagrin that, you know, uh, they called me Sarge, so I I I like structure. I think structure uh, encourages both efficiency. Uh, I think it encourages fairness. I think it encourages uh, even camaraderie. And uh, as as people um, put forth positions. Uh, those positions may be voted down, they may be voted up, but uh, they should come away. Um, knowing that uh, that. That the matter was fairly uh, adjudicated, that the game was fairly played, and not that I consider this a game. Or a a win-loss thing, but I I'm, that's the best metaphor uh, I can, I can come forward with. And, and those structures don't serve as an end in themselves. They serve. So that this board, which serves uh, city council and the citizens of Boulder. Uh, hear from us and that our thoughts are conveyed, our. Uh, concerns are conveyed and that they're conveyed in a way that um. Uh, that the community and council can uh, read in a in a fair and concise way. What uh, what happened in uh, in our meeting? And and really what are what are recommendations uh, or concerns are, so uh. My goal is, is that we should all agree on the rules. And the procedures and uh, and do that now in a, in a calm time when. We don't have a a tough topic in front of us, so that when we do get into tougher topics. Um, we can debate those tough topics fairly and and not. We're, we're not uh, debating the, the rules or calling on the referee or. Uh, calling out the referee or having people cheer from the sidelines. Um, let's, let's concentrate on the, on the matter at hand, so we aren't debating the rules. So that's my little intro, and I'm curious uh, what uh, what the rest of you have to say.
Lisa.
Um, I'm just looking at your email. Mark and um. I don't think I I I think I would feel comfortable affirming those two things, but. My take on kind of what happened is something I think a little bit different. Um. I'm trying to think of like how to, how to phrase it well, um. And that is that I I don't think we have to have. One hundred percent yes votes on things. I think it's okay to just go ahead and take a vote on something, and if someone doesn't like it, they can put it down. And if they mostly like it, they can vote for it while gritting their teeth. And that we can trust staff to take some notes showing that somebody didn't like a certain part or. You know, I I've done that. I've I've been the one person voting against something, because I'm like, I just really don't like this thing, and I'm like, make sure you put that on the notes, you know, um. And 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 that that was kind of my. Um, where where I was coming from and the way that I conducted myself and approached that meeting was that I just, I was like, let's, let's go ahead and vote. If you don't like it, you can vote against it. That's fine. Like, we don't have to come to one hundred percent consensus on everything. We don't have to split everything off into little pieces. You know, like, let's, let's move ahead, which I think. I'm bringing forward because I I think, again, I I honestly not affirm what you brought, but but that to me isn't the crux of what happened. Um, so I'm not sure that me affirming what you put forward would necessarily address a similar situation in the future. Um, that's my take.
George. You're uh, muted.
Sorry, I'm I'm just, I'm agreeing with Lisa all day long today. Uh, I I mean, I I I'm looking at your email too. I I think number one is easy. Number two. Is again, I I think anyone can make any motion.
I'm sorry, if we're going to refer to Mark's email, we should probably pull it up on the screen so that members of the public can see it, because they may not have seen it. So if we're going to talk about number one and number two, let's just uh, make that transparent. Sorry to interrupt.
So Devin, can you, or Brenda, can you do that?
Yep, I'll pull it up right now.
Okay.
Okay, is this, I can see.
Thank you.
On the correct screen.
Alright, so um, as as I was mentioning, I, number one, I don't have an issue with. Number two, in general, I don't have an issue with either. I I think that's the way that. Planning board has operated, that anyone can make any motion um, at the end of a vote. Um, where I diverge is the idea of. Infinite minutia that we vote on. Um, and I'll use my example that I used when I was talking about CU South. It's kind of the same thing, right? What exactly what Lisa said, we went through a process. Everyone made commentary, their commentary is in in the notes. I don't think anyone that voted on CU South, either for or against or abstain. Necessarily got everything they wanted, and we didn't vote on every single one of those issues independently, because it would be. Less powerful, number one, as a vote, and it's also would be. Infinitely exhausting and also hard for anyone to interpret what we're actually doing as a board. The the vote that we were, that we, that this came up on was actually a pretty simple one. We were talking about three things. But those three things could either easily be thirty things, and our meetings could get sabotaged. By trying to go into minutia on, from anyone's perspective. Um, so um, I I and I don't think that's the way anybody of our boards or council actually operates. Um, what I would suggest that isn't in here, that I've been thinking about, to make sure that people's voices are heard properly. Um, and I would put this up for a suggestion is, I I think the way that the planning board has functioned generally works. But it may be in fact that people don't feel like they're to what Lisa said, when you don't agree with everything. That that's captured in a way that is easy to, for someone else to digest in the minutes. So what I would suggest is, at the end of a vote, um, and at the end of the vote in those particular minutes. That um, members who want to explain why they voted the way they did. And um, what they opposed in that vote, even if they went for it, or what they. What they, what they thought was good about that vote, even though they went against it. I think it would be great to have a a simple summary. Um, at the end of a vote like that, where people can express themselves. So we don't get, we don't get into that minutia. That I think is a very dangerous precedent. Um, but we do have an opportunity for people to voice exactly why they did what they did. Um, in a way that can be easily documented and for people to easily read. Um, so that, that's my thought on that.
Okay, do we have uh, Mark, go ahead.
So I I I wanted to respond to this, and I and I I didn't, I didn't put everything in the email and. You know, I just thought, let's, let's, let's have this discussion. And I have a, I have a whole bunch of minutes on my other screen. And I I think there's a spectrum between all things. It would be, I I don't think any of us would say. We need to combine everything into one motion all the time. And and that, you know, when we have an agenda item, that you you have one motion, that up or down, you vote yes or no on that. On that entire agenda item, and then no one, especially me, is advocating for uh. Um, motions on minutia. That, you know, that you, you could have twenty motions, thirty motions.
I just, I, Mark, Mark, I gotta interrupt you because I disagree, because what we were talking about from my perspective. When we went through that whole process was minutia. So, so you may have a different definition of minutia than I do, but I I I respectfully disagree. That that's exactly what was happening, which is why I was opposed to that process.
Well, so, I respectfully, we had three motions that. Were uh, it it was three motions. It was not twenty, it was not thirty, it was three. And those three motions, subsequently by by forcing. A combat, by combining of them, we spent at least another half an hour when. We simply could, just, just, let me finish, we could have simply taken a vote on those three motions. And we would have been done earlier, and we would have had a greater precision. I'm looking at the minutes where um, you and Sarah were gone of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. The second round of of the votes, uh, staff gave us four motions. That we adopted, five oh, they could have all been crammed together and and the vote would have been the same. But because of the message of trying to convey to council specifically, staff gave us four motions to vote on. That, that was on the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. On uh, the, every, every set of minutes I have from the last whole bunch of meetings. Either the board or staff have, we have had multiple, it's been, it's been. In the majority that we've had multiple motions on an agenda item, so to simply say. That we don't, this is the way we do it, we put it all together to avoid minutia, we actually separate things. To precisely convey our message, and I thought, I think it's. I think it is a matter of uh, power, control and respect. That we balance, if if a board member is abusing the option of making motions and they're doing it. For minutia and they're doing it in excess, let's deal with that. We can, that person shouldn't get a second on those motions. But it's also just as abusive to say, here is a complex topic. And whether it's staff giving us separate motions or a board member coming forth and saying. I want to convey this message, and I suggest the board, you don't, you don't make a motion unless you're trying to convince. The board to vote in the majority for your motion. So all I'm saying is that within this continuum of everything crammed into one motion. And minutia and twenty or thirty motions on the other hand, that there is a balance there, and unless. Unless someone is abusing. At either end of the spectrum, then then accommodation. And um, it would, will likely result in in a better outcome and more comity. Amongst the board, rather than uh, you know, forcing. Uh, someone to vote. Against something that they're actually ninety percent for.
I I, Mark, I I gotta interrupt you because you used the word force a few times. And if you rewind that meeting, what you will find is, we actually, Laura made all the motions she wanted. We actually went through a motion-making process, and we voted through that process. So the process you're talking about is exactly what we did.
And and you, you know, you're right, you use the rules.
You, so, so how is that forcing? So, so wait, 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 wait. How is that in your perspective? How is it forcing if we use the rules that you were just talking about?
Okay, let's change the word. I'll change the word. No one forced anything. You had a board member. Who had made a series of motions that the result would have been the same. But we would have resulted in greater precision, less angst, and and we would have gotten done earlier. Had we just simply gone through and voted on those three motions instead. Instead, it wasn't forced, you used the correct procedure. I I'm fine with the procedure in that case. I I was, I was upset that you were calling it a process coup. You used the process, you used the vote. To say, no, you are, we are, we are changing this to combine all three motions into one. Hence, Laura had to make a decision. She wasn't forced. She could have voted yes or no. But instead, i- i- it was, it was an unnecessary and.
But, but I.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the floor first.
Anyway, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta respond to Mark for a second, because, because, because we, we followed a process. And and Laura made motions and they failed. Then other motions were made and they were passed. There was no jump in any process. There was no disrespect in that process. We actually followed the exact process that you're talking about. Now, did people, did people say some things that, you know, process coup or whatever, or disres- you disrespect me, or you you could. You could analyze that stuff all day long, but the process that we actually followed was exactly what you're saying. And 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 it was the correct process in that she made motions. They were voted down, there were other motions made, and they succeeded. End of story. I don't understand how that's any different than what you're saying. Just because people don't like the outcome, doesn't mean. The 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 process is, would have been any different under what you're suggesting.
Well, well, I have a question.
Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and I'm hoping, um, I'm thinking I remember this correctly, but please correct me, either George or Mark or anyone else if I'm remembering wrong. What I recall is that the way it was originally presented to us, or the other, the motion that we started with was a single motion with everything. Together. Then it was split into three. Then a bunch of us got, you know, I'll just say our knickers in a twist about that weren't real happy. And we said, no, 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 we don't want to do it that way. And then, so, I mean, didn't, didn't it start out more tight and then it got?
Lisa, I think, no, I think you're missing, I think you're misremembering. There was.
Lisa, I think, no, I think you're missing, I think you're misremembering. There was a motion that staff presented. And then there were two friendly amendments offered. One of those friendly amendments was clearly going to pass unanimously and one of them was not. And so my suggestion, which I thought that John agreed with and Hella agreed with and, or I guess Hella wasn't there. Elliot agreed with and Brad agreed with was that we would take three separate votes on the three issues. And that's what I was expecting going in, but clearly that wasn't unanimously expected. And there seemed like there was some surprise that they were not all three combined into one motion. That is when, you know, I said, I don't accept the friendly amendments because I want us to vote on these things separately. I was not trying to prevent people from voting on those things. I just wanted there to be a separate record that that one piece was not unanimous. So I think what Mark is trying to do here with the email that he sent that is on our screen. Is to formally acknowledge that Robert's rules are how we function. And that there is no requirement that motions must be combined. And George is right that if people. Feel so strongly, I can absolutely envision a scenario where I feel like. This piece, my support for piece A is dependent upon it being combined with piece B and piece C. Like, that's absolutely a legitimate argument to make. I think the board can have that discussion. But I think what Mark is trying to say here is that we do not indeed have a precedent that motions must be combined. I agree with George. I don't think that we should be having thirty different votes on minutia. But I also agree with Mark that if there is a board member who feels strongly enough. That they would like to have a piece separated out so that the vote is recorded separately. That that is something that we should generally give each other deference on unless somebody is abusing it. Th- that's my position. That's how I have always functioned. Um, you know, as a collaborative facilitator. The most important thing to me is that we are accurately conveying how we actually feel about something. And of course, the board may sometimes choose to do some horse trading and some negotiating and saying. I will go for this, but only if it is packaged with that. That's a legitimate discussion for us to have because sometimes things are inseparable. In this particular case. It it was not clear to me that other board members felt like their support for the main motion was dependent upon having it packaged. With the um. Uh, the the additional two policies being added to the memo that accompanied our resolution. Um, and maybe I misunderstood that. And if so, I apologize for misunderstanding how people were feeling about that packaging. It seemed to me like it was a process question and that there was a a feeling that the board had some kind of tradition or precedent. Where everything needed to be packaged together. And I think that's what we're trying to clarify tonight is, do we indeed have this expectation? That there will be, everything will always be packaged together. Or if a board member feels strongly enough about having things, some piece of it that they feel strongly enough about to want to split it out. Like, I clearly have voted for things in the past where I felt lukewarm about it, or it wasn't super important to me, or I was willing to go along with other board members. The prime example, the BVSD, the um, Boulder Valley School District, Modular Factory and the height question. I wasn't super enthusiastic about making that a recommendation to city council, but I went along with it because I didn't feel strongly enough to vote against it. Or make a big stink about it. So I'm not, I'm not going to do this every time. I promise you, I don't want us to have thirty votes on issues either. I'm not going to do this for minutia. I'm clearly willing to go along to get along sometimes, but not always. And so I would like to have that deference from you folks when I feel strongly about something and I will give it to you when you feel strongly about something. So I think that's what Mark is trying to clarify here.
So that's, that's really helpful, Laura, and 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 perhaps it's something I should noodle on more and kind of explore. How strongly I am and what I, how strongly I feel about what I'm about to say, but. I I think I do have a strong preference for not having board members con- be breaking. Things off. I do want every board member to be heard. I want that to be reflected in minutes. I want. Council to hear when somebody has a strong feeling, even if that's like a no vote against the whole thing because there's a piece in there that I hate and I cannot vote for this thing. But when, you know, and and I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your exact phrasing and it, but I thought it was really good where you said I'd like there, I I think what you said, so correct me if I'm, if I'm paraphrasing you incorrectly. Um, was, you know, deference that if someone feels really strongly and wants to split something out that we will. Um, agree as a board from out of course that we will do that. I I'm not sure that's something I agree with, even when I, even if I'm the person who's. Getting mad about it. Um, I would rather. Typically, and we don't always do it, sometimes we we change things and and do things. I would rather when it, when it's clear that we basically got a majority, it's gonna pass. Go ahead and take the vote and like, if somebody wants to vote against it, fine. Make sure the notes, you know, get into the thing and 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 move quicker that way. Because I appreciate Mark, what you were saying, like, gosh, we got bogged down in this and it turned into this whole long thing that didn't need to be. And I agree with you that if we've gone along with that plan, that would also go on faster. But when I think back to like, what was the reason why I personally didn't? I think it's because I was like, please, can we just take a vote on originally what staff put forward, not split us into three things? Because one person has a certain thing they want to get into. And just take the vote, you know, and and if, and if it ends up being a split vote because of that, then fine. Yeah, and I'm not saying that that my thinking is necessarily right or good or. As facilitative and collaborative as as, you know, you might recommend that I be Laura. Um, but but I think that is where I was coming from. Is that I I wanted to just kind of. Move and not split into three things.
Just just for clarification, in this particular case, it wasn't splitting up something that staff had recommended. It was. Not including extra things that board members were recommending into the main motion, but voting on those extra things separately, just just for clarification.
George. Yeah, and and I I won't repeat myself, but um, that Laura, that's exactly. Was my concern was. When we were voting on that particular motion, the motion you were making. I disagreed with voting on what staff has recommended as the first part of that motion. Because I wanted the modifications voted on. And I did not want to vote for for that wholesale without voting for the modifications that I thought were important. So when you, when you, when you put that upfront, the first vote that you're making. In that case, the way it was written was you were approving the whole thing. And then separately, there was a motion modifying that. But I never wanted to approve that whole thing. And so when we talk about sort of deference to board members, understand that position as well. That there is a balance there. Um, and there's always going to be a minority and majority and you will, you know. All of us will be on different sides of that as we go and that's. I I I don't disagree actually with what. M- Mark put down that anyone can make, should and be able to make a motion. But there's also a level of understanding that that was a really simple vote and my concerns. Beyond that vote are. This, this type of precedent. Could be used, and and again, to to Mark's point, the the, the question is who's the arbiter of what's reasonable and what's not? Because I didn't think the third part of adding a note. And voting on that, I I think the third component was just like referencing a note. It wasn't even like a material topic. Was, was that important to, to break that out? And who, who, who says to to Mark's point? What's reasonable and what's not? Um, obviously, we have to hold each other account to that. But in that case. You, you have to understand, I thought it was unreasonable to vote on what staff had recommended wholesale upfront. Because I didn't want to do that. Um, so that's why I made an alternate motion. And the process that's outlined in in Mark's email is exactly the process that we followed. And if we were to do this again, someone could still do that process. Um, and it would be up to everybody to decide whether or not to vote up or down those motions. I don't think anything really changes.
So.
Mark, yeah.
Okay, I I I. I think my biggest point is that. Um, and I'm glad we all agree, we're gonna use Robert's rules. I, can we all agree on that? Because. That that kind of simplifies things and and people. Win or lose votes or make a motion and don't get a second. I've had that happen, I think a couple of times. So. Uh, you know, I, that's a, that's always an experience. Um, but I I want to point out that. In the minutes of our, um, of the, of the meeting where we did the the CIP, the capital improvements program. We had. The the motion that staff gave us. Which we, uh, I moved, Lisa seconded, we voted seven oh on that. Then Laura made a motion. That was not part of the package. That was a regard to the municipal airport master plan and a process regarding the master plan. And uh, that motion was uh. Moved by Laura, seconded by me and voted seven oh. Uh, and then finally, a motion by George, seconded by ML. Uh, to recommend the city manager, the city council, uh, need to prioritize the approved CIP to address unforeseen resource constraints and. And and safety. And and so that was the third, it was all to do with the CIP and those, we we had three seven oh votes. But those, and those could have been combined into one monster long paragraph. But to what advantage? There, there is, there is no advantage in doing that. And so by being reasonable, and again, I I can't define reasonable in every circumstance. But by being reasonable and accommodating and fostering. Uh, comity amongst board members. I think we can both be more efficient, spend less time. And be more precise in our message to the community and and to council. And I think the CIP are 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 motions on the CIP. Which were six out of seven board members. Uh, made motions or seconded motions and they were all unanimous, yet we broke them up into three pieces. I I think it's, it's just like, hey, why are we actually, why would we fight about this? When there are certainly other battles more worthy of our angst than. Then then respecting a board member's wish and just uh, having a, having a um. A a separate vote on a, on a, on a more precise motion.
Mark, you are arguing what's reasonable and what's not. I thought what Laura was doing was unreasonable. Okay, and so you're saying what she was doing was reasonable and what I was doing was not? I think that's the, that's the crux of the issue, right? And so, and so. I I suggest we stick to what we have, which is make whatever motion you want. If it gets voted up, it gets voted up. If it gets voted down, it gets voted down. Don't, because your emotions didn't pass, don't get upset about it. Right? And um, I think it is good practice for us to make sure that we're not wasting everyone's time and 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 again. Three things is a lot different than thirty. If we would have done this to my point about CU South is, or other large topics. We will exhaust ourselves. Um, but feel free, right? Because that's the right of Robert's rules and no one's arguing process here. What I'm suggesting is that beyond this, we actually do something that matters. And and summarize and give a person an opportunity for their voice to be heard after the vote is cast. To say, I voted for this and this is why. And I I I didn't like this, but I had, but I voted for it because it was in good measure and and. Be able to capture that for people to really understand what people are voting for. And if people want to break things up. I, I I don't think our process that's outlined in Robert's rules suggests anything differently. I just think it's personally. Your suggestion of what's reasonable and whatnot, I disagree with because I thought I was being reasonable and I thought Laura was being unreasonable. And I think Laura thought she was being reasonable and she probably thought I was being unreasonable. And so no one can make that determination. So where we landed was actually the right place to go, which was, we put a bunch of motions forth. We debated it and we, and we moved forward as a board. So what are we talking about?
Yeah, I I think we're talking about, George, I I I think if you go back and watch. The video. We're talking about a board that was exhibiting. A. At at a level of heatedness that was unnecessary. And a, and and there were proclamations made, we don't do this. This is not our procedure. And so if you go back and watch the video, I, I, it, it, it. Anyway, I I've had uh, multiple people watch that segment and and I I found it to be ugly.
Yeah, I, you know, I think if you, we want to work on things sort of individually as board members and how we get along better. And we go out to dinner and we get to know each other and we understand what our objectives are. I think that's the way to accomplish that. What we actually did in that, besides, besides how we got there, was actually the correct, the process that you're outlining here. So again, my point is, what are we doing here? If we're, if we follow the exact process of what you're talking about, what are we talking about?
So I I want to weigh in and say, the thing, the thing that confused me most about that meeting, and George, I may have misunderstood you. But I felt that you were saying that the motion that I made was improper. And that that is not the board's process and that you convinced the rest of the board that somehow. The way that it was being framed was improper and should be voted down and it should all be combined. And so if we can agree. And and I, and I appreciated, George, that you said that you didn't want to change the process on the fly. And that you were open to talking about our process and making sure we're all on the same page about the process going forward. But that you didn't feel like it should be done in the middle of a vote and I absolutely appreciate that. So I'm glad we're talking about it tonight. And if we can agree with the things that Mark has put here, that Robert's rules is how we do it. And that a board, any board member can make any motion they want. That uh, topics must be, uh, uh, topics do not have to be all combined into one motion. That they can be split out if somebody wants to propose that. And if other people think that that's. Not what they want to vote for. If they think those things are inseparable, for example, or if their support for A depends on B. As you, you said that yours did, George, in that last meeting. That that's fine, then then you can vote it down for that reason and make that argument and persuade the rest of the board to vote it down if you feel those things are inseparable. Um, so if if we can agree that. Motions do not have to be combined, but they can be combined or they can be split out. Any board member can make any motion. And that we operate by Robert's rules. And I love what you said, George, about if things. If somebody does feel like the vote does not reflect something that they think should be reflected in the minutes, that they have the opportunity to put that into the minutes. Um, I think that that's a, um, that all makes me happy. So if that's where we land tonight, I'm very happy.
I see Brad has his hand up, uh. Might be able to contribute a bit.
Yeah, I I appreciate uh, all of the conversation and my comments here aren't meant to really speak to. Any of the opinions that have been uh, expressed, but rather just to share. Uh, experience that I've had being on and working with many boards uh, over the years. I I think you all recognize that Robert's rules includes, uh, you know, presentations, et cetera, et cetera, and then a motion is put forward. And then there's always discussion, right? A motion should always be followed by discussion. A a motion in a second, if there's a second, then that there would be discussion. And then a vote before any new motion could be made. That discussion point, I've seen uh, groups and and myself. You know, often that's back and forth discussion about whatever the motion is. Um, but when it feels ripe for the time that we're going to be voting, you know, you're going to be voting on something, I've seen boards say. Uh, okay, it's my turn to talk. Uh, I'm going to be voting no on this and and I just want you, I want to explain why, blah, 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 blah. Or I'm going to be voting yes on this and I'm, and here's my reason why. Uh, not that you have to go down the line and do that, but that can be an opportunity. In the right context to get something in the minutes of of why you're even voting up or down. You know, for for a particular motion, as opposed to feeling like you have to talk about it after the motion's made. Um, at which point it's moot and and may not sway another person's opinion at that point. Um, so that that is a very common practice. I just wanted to share that. Um, and and not to get off this line of discussion, but just since I'm speaking uh, and and all energetic, so so that it's not forgotten. Um, you had asked staff to. Um, have a uh. Formal presentation or time uh, set aside to talk about process. I believe we're teeing that up with our consultant. Don't hold me to that. Uh, John, I think you and Sarah talked about that with Charles and I just wanted to remind the group or inform them if you didn't know. Um, that we are working towards that um, specific presentation and. Education topic, discussion topic, however you want to characterize that. Uh, early in the, in the new year. So just wanted to clarify that. And John, you might actually know more than I do, right?
Yeah, uh, in fact, there were some, there were some dates proposed, but I don't think uh, any decision has been made on that. Yeah. George.
Um, I, 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 what Laura said, which is, I, like I said, I agree with number one. Um, I I uh I, what Laura said, which is, I, like I said, I agree with number one. And I agree with number two, that everyone can make any motion they want. Where I don't necessarily think it's necessary to affirm more than that. Is that I don't believe there's not a precedent that motions must be combined. Because there are scenarios like CU South. Where we have voted on a tremendous number of things altogether. That is a precedent of of that vote, and we all explained why we were voting, how we were voting. And the things that we agreed with and didn't agree with. So I don't, I don't believe there's not precedent for something like that. And I don't think it needs to be stated one way or the other, because what we are, we we would affirm in this is that. Anyone can make any motion they want, which is what it says in Robert's rules to begin with. And is exactly the process we follow and the outcome we had. Whether or not we had this in writing like this versus something that we did afterwards would be the same exact outcome. Um, but but affirming, but but. But being specific about one thing and not about another when we get into the specificity of number two. Um, versus just being able to, as board members, make whatever motions we want and have the freedom to do that. Um, I I think leads us down another rabbit hole of minutia where. Um, you know, we might want to start laying out what's reasonable, what's not, and all these different things that I I think is. You think, I think won't serve us well, so.
Lisa.
Yeah, I agree with that and and I think. And forgive me because. I think there are other people who have reviewed this meeting more recently than I have, and thank you for the corrections you've already made. Um, to my recollections of something that happened a while ago and and emotionally heated situation and. Where we all got kind of turned around, but um. My recollection, which may be true or may not, um, is. That it almost felt like we were pre-litigating the motion. And I think that's where I sort of got frustrated. I was like, just just make the motion. Let's see if it passes or fails. I think we've got enough photos that's going to pass. I know that may not be what everybody wants, but like. Let's go. And like, and and instead it just, I don't know. I um and and again, I think this gets to the correction you've already made made um about, you know, where it started and what it turned into, where it was or wasn't. And so that that's where, when I look at like A and B, I I I totally agree that there's no precedent that motions must be combined or must be split apart or, but sure, I I. I agree with that, but I I don't know that we need to say it. And sure, smaller, more specific motions may allow for greater precision. Um, a- and also there may be times when, you know, we just go ahead and take a vote on something. Um, recognizing that maybe I hate it and I'm going to vote against it because I'm mad about maybe all of it or some of it. And that's okay, you know, like like let's just go ahead and move. Um, you know, and so maybe that just shows my uh preoccupation and bias toward um faster process. Um, uh but but that was kind of. From my recollection, which I'm sure is not perfect and I have not reviewed, um, you know, listened to the recording. Um, yeah, it it felt like there was this push for like. I don't know. Um, and and I and I think that's where I was reacting from without having closely reviewed where it was at and. And that's why when I look at A and B, I'm like, yeah, I don't have any problem with those on their face, but I'm also not sure that whether we affirm or don't affirm those. It's necessarily going to stop us from having, and hopefully, I I think we're all speaking about this in a in a good way. Um, I hope we don't do that again, but I I don't know if it's going to prevent it from happening again. And so. Um, you know, I I guess, you know, to not belabor it tonight, I I don't, I don't need to talk about it a whole lot more, but. Um, I appreciate. Mark bringing this forward, I appreciate the work um that Laura and and you know, everyone's putting toward thinking through this and trying to figure it out. I I agree that, you know. When and as appropriate, us seeing each other outside and continuing to work on it is important. And I I'm just not sure that. Formally affirming or adopting A and B is necessarily going to prevent. A repeat. I hope we don't repeat it anyway for other reasons, but. I'm not sure it addresses it.
Okay.
Just for clarification, Mark, are you suggesting that we formally affirm or adopt these things, or you were just hoping to have a conversation about it? You're on mute, Mark.
Just to have a conversation so that uh in in a lighter, earlier uh setting. Uh, that we we could avoid um what I thought was a corrosive event uh in the future.
Okay, ML.
Thank you, John. Um. I was not at that meeting. I did watch the video of it. And. It was a very difficult meeting to watch. Um, my. The perspective that came to me from watching it was that. And I think this. Um. Suggestion came at that training that we did. Um, at our retreat is, I I think we need to give. The chair, the authority to lead and to and to be able to say, okay. Um. One or two more comments. Let's take a vote to to be able. To curtail the round and round. That that seemed to happen at that meeting, like I say, I was not there, I watched it. Um, but there was just an around and around and around and around and. And. I I think that that our chair should have the authority to. Say, okay, we've gone around and around. If there's nothing new to put on the table. Let's, let's have some votes, let's articulate. Um. See where we all stand and and let the votes drive conclusions or or not, but. To me, I think that that is the missing element is, we need to get, we need to have. Our chair feel like he has, he or she has the authority. To um, to call a halt. To a round and round situation. That is exacerbating people's energies. And I I think. Making us an ineffective board. So that would be my suggestion. It's the thing, let's add on there, you know, the chair. The chair has our um. Our agreement, we give him the authority, him or her the authority to um, to step in.
So I love that you said that, ML, and um and I'll I'll daylight a brief um offline comment that um Sarah and I had where. Um, and and I, there there are many things I actually uh prefer and enjoy with with apologies to Harmon about John's uh leadership style. But one strength um of Harmon's was. Um, sometimes in ways that I pushed back against and didn't appreciate uh was was kind of rapidly moving us. Forward on on things and kind of uh running a uh and and my, again, sometimes I felt an overly tight ship. So there are things that I like better about about with the way you do things, John, but um. But I had mentioned to Sarah, kind of, I was like, you know, we could maybe use a little more of that uh. That Harvard style, even though made us both mad sometimes. Um, so, um, yeah, with without in any way uh. Not enjoying and appreciating John's style. I I think that's a good observation, ML, that um that we we might all benefit from a firmer hand at times. Um, and and John, at least for speaking for myself individually and kind of echoing, ML said, you know, feel free to exercise that. Um, even if I'm the one waxing on and on, I I think, I think there are times when that's really beneficial.
Okay, well, thank you. This is, I I agree with you frankly. Uh. I was conscious, you know, in my my practice has generally been. To consciously promote more discussion rather than diminish it, but I certainly understand that if there are times when it's not productive. And it's time to move ahead, and I will keep that in mind and try and act on it. ML.
No, I, my hand shouldn't be up. And my mic should be off.
Okay, well, I, I think this was uh extremely useful. I don't think we need to take any sort of a formal decision or response on this. But I think it's very useful to keep it in mind when we have our process uh. Uh, meeting that staff is putting together for January, February. Brad?
Yeah, and and not to draw out the conversation, but I just want to, as, as a really. Appropriately so outside observer to this particular conversation. Say that I do really appreciate um the effort all of you are showing the. Um, you know, emotional commitment and and how closely you've listened to each other. I think you've. Really embraced and embodied uh the discussion that took place at the retreat and. Uh, you know, from a staff perspective, we um, we're happy to support uh the board in in its many needs and. And and I just want to express that appreciation and and observation of you this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other matters? Lisa.
I just want to re-echo one thing, and and that is. The thing that haunts me most about anything like that and that I really appreciate about Mark bringing this forward and that I hope we're taking away from this. Is that I think when it gets heated and emotional. And I I know this is true for myself and perhaps for others as well. It's often because I feel like I'm not being heard. Like people like aren't absorbing like what I'm saying. And like if I just said it the right way, or if I said it enough times or like. Something that like, you know, it would get through and then we would like all be like on the same page in the same place. So um, I I just want to say that. And I really appreciate what Georgie brought forward about um. You know, making sure that if someone does agree with something, that we make the space for that to be reflected somewhere, because I think that's incredibly important. I think council needs to see that. I think the public needs to see that. And I think we as individuals. Need to feel like we are seen and heard, and that even if people aren't agreeing with us, or even if a vote goes a different way, um. You know, that we're still recognized and it's not that that our points didn't get across, and perhaps we'll carry the day next time and someone else will be in that spot. Um, you know, so I I just want to highlight that because that that's. Again, the thing that haunts me most about when we get along our heads isn't, isn't even the conflict, right, necessarily? It's it's, you know, to, are we? Does someone feel like they're being shut down? And and I hope not, you know, and does someone feel like they're not being heard? And and I just, I want to make sure that we um. Find ways to run efficient meetings and and move forward. Well, and follow Robert's Robert's rules supporter um and and within that also make sure that people feel seen and heard and like their views are reflected and getting. Um, you know, recorded and and moved on to decision makers, so. I am sorry to anyone who felt silenced, and I know I have felt that way sometimes in the past, but then I show up in the minutes and I'm okay, but um, it happens.
Okay. Uh, any other on uh different issues? I I have one just to ask staff. I noticed that H A B is is initiating the their hybrid meetings uh in person and uh. Online, and I'm hoping that uh we get the chance to move into that phase also pretty soon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm sorry I didn't think to mention that earlier. We have been encouraged to move uh to hybrid, which means live for you all. Uh, as soon as possible, and and we absolutely want to, as staff, and we know you do as, as board members as well. One thing that's a little bit unique about planning board and landmarks board uh in in particular is the need to have. A clear dais from um the area of the audience. As you know, some of the. Land use applications can draw large crowds. And we know that it's important for you to be able to maintain an orderly discussion. Um, many of the other boards do not regularly. Generate larger crowds, and so that's not a consideration of theirs, but. In light of that, for consistency, we're waiting until we can get into the council chambers. Um, to be able to hold the hybrid meetings. And to do that requires some training and new equipment um in in the chamber. Uh, we're hoping it's happening, you know, as soon as possible in the new year, but uh but that is taking a little bit of time at this point.
Okay, well.
So.
Keep trying.
We'll keep, we'll keep working hard.
And Brad, I just want to clarify, so um, did I correctly understand that when uh. Meetings move back to a hybrid model, that the expectation will be that planning board members are physically present at every planning board meeting?
That certainly is the intention. I I can't say that we as a city have developed a policy around that. And and frankly, that might be something for uh the board to consideration. Brenda, I don't know, as we kind of move forward, if we can keep that question in mind as well. Thank you.
Yes, I was just making a note to myself to uh bring that up the next time I have a check-in with Sarah that um. That request is coming from planning board, that we have some sort of consistent policy around. Um, expected board attendance, either in person or um whether you can be hybrid as well.
Yeah, and and I would say um. And and perhaps this is something to have a conversation about at a future session. Again, I'm not trying to make this meeting longer, although at least it's not as late as it usually is. Um, but for myself, as the parent of a young child, you know, uh showing up one night a month, maybe even two nights a month. Um, might be absorbable, you know, when we. Move to three, or if I've got a sick kid, or you know, I I can see a lot of situations where I would be cut out, you know, and and potentially we might not make quorum. Or I might not be able to carry out my duties. Um, or like I know Sarah has to travel quite a bit for work. I don't, I don't know if other folks do. Um, so it'd be nice to have a consistent policy, and my preference would be that. There's an expectation that, you know, the majority of meetings or fifty percent of meetings or something that that were there present, and I think there's great value in being physically present. And also. If we always have to be, I I think we may have um lower attendance and or. You know, when we look to add more people to count to um planning board, you know, it's going to shut it down for a lot of folks. Uh, including potentially some folks we already have on the board. Um, so just want to name that.
And I'll just share if I may that what council is currently doing is that if they have a reason that they need to attend the meeting from home. They have been allowed to do that. Um, so council member friend was um not feeling well a few weeks ago, and she attended on Zoom. Um, in addition, they do all of their study sessions um virtually still, and that's the plan going forward. So it's really only for their business meetings where they're making decisions that they um strive to be in person.
Yeah, I think if, if we feel like that can be done in a way that's respectful of everyone, that would be. That would be nice, you know, because again, yeah, I hate to like call out and be like, well, I have a mild cold, like. So I'm just not going to show up or if I could call in and not infect everyone, that would be nice.
Mark.
Uh, I just, I just wanted to clarify, um. I was looking at council schedule and stuff. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the twentieth. Uh, and that seems to be almost in the break period for other boards. And I I just. I didn't know about other people's travel schedule. I I'm planning on being available for it. Um, I I'm, I I haven't looked at the calendar to see what the agenda topic is, but that would certainly seem to be one. That if it's some big site review or a critical thing. Uh, that, you know, it would be susceptible to um poor attendance, uh given its proximity and people's travel. So I just wanted to confirm that.
It's two concept reviews, Mark, just so you know.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anyway, that was it.
I I'm sorry, I don't, Sarah, I don't know what you were looking at, but when I look at the um. Planning and Development Services calendar for December, you're talking about December twentieth, right, Mark? That's a.
Maybe I was looking at December sixth, my apologies.
No worries. So December twentieth is when the site review criteria comes back to us, and that that one feels like a big one that we wouldn't want people to be absent for.
Ye- yes, oh my.
Uh, we can make sure to do our attendance polling very early. So Devin, maybe if you can make a note that we maybe do that, say, next week, so that we've got a good handle on that.
Got it.
Thank you.
And I I sent some dates in the chat that I will not be available in January for a meeting with Marrow and planning to make all of our planning board meetings. But if we're adding something in early January, I am out for a considerable stretch in between planning board meetings.
Okay. Good, uh, good information to have. So we'll uh, so you'll do that poll and we'll consider if we actually have that meeting on the twentieth, depending on who's able to participate. So. Okay. Any other matters? We all talked out? Okay.
Us? Talked out?
Does seem premature to end it, but uh unless anyone. Has anything else, I propose we adjourn. Okay.
Thank you again for everything.
Let us adjourn. Thank you.
Everyone.
Good night.
Have a great night.